I call this, I call this meeting to order for North Adams City Council Regular Meeting, October 25th, 2022. Will the Clerk please take the roll?
Blackmer.
Here.
Barbo.
Bona.
Here.
Harpen.
Here.
Obasahan.
Here.
Alezkowitz.
Here.
Sapienza.
Here.
Shade.
Here.
Wilkinson.
Here.
Eight present, we have a quorum. Please rise from the pledge in a moment of silent remembrance. Please remember Bruce Patnau, a retired North Adams firefighter. And the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have a motion to approve the minutes of September 13th, 2022?
Move.
Second.
Counselor Shade and Counselor Alezkowitz, discussion?
Were those in our packet?
They're in the packet, they're in the packets on, in your, in your packets. They weren't attached to the agenda, my apologies.
Okay, I didn't get a chance to read them.
We also have the 11th here. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stentions? Motion carries. We don't have the minutes of September 27th. So, hearing of event, of visitors on agenda items, anyone wish to approach the council on an issue that's listed on the agenda, please give your name and address for the record. You have two minutes and no personal attacks. To the microphone, please.
I would like to address Council Paper 12185, please. The mayor is asking for a feasibility study that costs $500,000. And that's only North Adams share. Who is going to pay the other share? You do a study to determine the economic way to do it, do a study and what the plan That is my question. For the flood shoot, what is my plan for the flood shoot? Does that mean replacing the whole thing, just repair it? These are the questions the council should be asking for the people and the people of North Adams. We should know before you approve this money, and we are not being told what the plan is. We should know what the plan is. This is only common sense. And come clean, mayor, and tell us what the whole story is. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the council on a listed agenda item? Okay, we will move on. Council Paper 9513-31, An Ordinance to Amending the Revised Ordinance, wait a minute. An ordinance to amend Chapter 7 of the Revised Ordinance is entitled Department of Public Services, Section 7-11 Regarding the Change of Permit Price. We have a motion and an update. Counselor, I think it was referred to Finance.
Oh, sorry. Yes, through the chair. So, the Finance Committee met last week to meet with the final departments of building and health, and those, we went over that. All the department now, spreadsheets have been handed over to the mayor's office, they are compiling them back into one spreadsheet that's all consistent and adding some of the things we've requested, such as the last time fees will be revised, so in the future we'll know how long it's been since a fee or fine has been changed. Due to some personal reasons, the mayor's administrative assistant is on leave at the moment, so she wasn't able to finish them up. And however, I believe because of our next agenda, it would probably be wise to, or there's some things that are coming on our next agenda, to have this come back the second meeting of November.
Is that a motion?
Make a motion to postpone to the second meeting in November.
Second.
Counselor Bona and Counselor Alezkowitz, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 11,826, An Ordinance Amending the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams Regarding Various Fees Established in the City Code. Like, it's basically the same thing.
Same thing. Postpone to the second meeting in November.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 8,717-41, Mayor's Communication Number 99, Setting the Date and Time for Class, Tax Classification Public Hearing.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone can hear me. This is just reserving time on the next agenda meeting to review the tax classification. We did receive our approval from the Department of Revenue for the steps that we needed to complete thus far, so we hope to present, we will present, the tax classification at the next meeting. So, this is just giving everyone a heads up that it's coming and that it will be presented at that meeting.
Okay.
And we'll be sending out a packet to the council as well.
And it will have to be published?
Yep.
Okay. If it's communication, without objection, I'll file a communication. Counsel-
I'm sorry, you already filed it. Just had a question.
Okay.
Through the chair to the mayor, just a quick question. At the next meeting, would we be able to get the information that you're going to send us maybe like a week ahead of time? We've been, I don't, a little hard going through it. I do have a work trip that week, so, and plus it's the election, and so, I'm just, you know, a few days ahead of time. If you can send it, it would be appreciated.
Our hope is, once we get it on to the agenda, that packet will be included, so the public will be informed as well. That's our plan.
And on that note, please, it's a reminder that the meeting, the next meeting will be on Wednesday, the 9th. We don't have council meetings on Election Day, so, and then in our ordinances, it also says we will meet the next, the next day, or the next legal day.
Correct.
So, just want to remind everybody to put that in their planner. Council Paper 12,153-1, Communication from City Clerk Valiers, Requesting to Allow the Police Chief and City Clerk the Responsibility to Assign Police Officers to the Pollings Place on Election Day. A move to approve would be in order?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Counselor Sapienza.
Yes, what is the current process now that?
So, they relinquished it to the city council to determine how police officers are appointed. And so, you know, traditionally, the chief and the city clerk have been the ones to, you know, to have the say over, you know, who gets appointed when. And, you know, this law gives you the opportunity to decide, but, you know, I find it would be a little bit more difficult, you know, if you had to approve it rather than, you know, the police chief and the city clerk working more cohesively.
So, I have a question for the clerk. Do we have to codify, do we have to accept legislation, or do we just approve your communication?
You would just have to approve the communication. It'll come through each time there's an election.
Oh, it's every time we don't, okay, so every time we can decide if we want to-
Exactly.
-get involved or not. Okay. Any other questions or comments, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? AEA's motion carries. Council Paper 12,179, Mayor's Communication Number 100, Submitting an Order to Accept the Sale of Land on River Street Map 81 Lots 21 and 21A. Without objection, I'm going to file the communication and have the mayor discuss this. If she, what we thought would work best, if she would describe the whole process that happened for all of the lots on this first one, then we'll move on to the order, we'll vote the order, and then each other one unless there's questions specifically about that piece of property, but at least we don't need to explain the process each time because there's several of them here, and I think we're smart enough to understand it the first explanation. So, mayor?
Great, thank you. So, our assessor, who is here today, Assessor Jessica Lynn Court, and I have been really working on focusing on getting as many parcels as we can back on the tax rolls. So, our first attempt at this was to look at all the properties that we had and form an abutter sale. So, these are properties that are owned by the City of North Adams, whether it be via a direct deed to us, given to us, or via tax title and land court proceedings. So, we developed a list and we sent it out to all of the abutters of all of the parcels listed. There were other parcels, but we didn't have any bids on them. So, this was sent to all the abutters, they had 21 days to respond, and they were all sent certified mail. So, at that point, they actually bid and wrote down what they wanted to pay for the parcel and what they were going to use for it. Most of these lots that are listed today, most of them are not buildable lots. Most of them are going to be used for additional parking or added for side yards. So, the goal today was, the goal of this abutter sale was to get these parcels back on the tax rolls and maintained. As some of you will drive around the city, you see lots that we quote "own" that are a mess, let's just be real. And these areas, these parcels, we did have an interest in. So, this is an attempt to help the property owners enhance their properties as well as get some blight out of our neighborhoods. So, we had this abutter sale, everything was submitted to the assessor's office, it was reviewed by a committee, which consisted of the building inspector, the director of community development, our treasurer, and our assessor. And they all vetted all of the bids, all the documentation, and made a recommendation. So, here I am tonight, asking you for permission and also informing you that we do have an interest in these properties. It's probably, you know, it's trump change, it's a total of $1,200 probably of new tax value, but, taxes, but who knows what these people will do with these properties, you know, it will enhance their properties and it will also clean up some sections of various neighborhoods. Nine times out of 10, most of these people were using them anyways, so why not have them pay a little bit for the use? And Assessor Lynn Court is here for any questions, so that's kind of the abbreviated process.
Okay, I was going to move on to the actual ordinance, and then we can ask our questions because there's several of these, otherwise we're going to go back and forth, so.
I figure now would be a good time because it's not specific to that ordinance.
Oh, okay, so we have questions about the process, ask some of the mayor now.
Okay. Through the chair. Mayor, a couple things. One, do, did any of these receive multiple bids?
A couple of them did.
And how does that work out?
It would go to the highest bidder.
Okay, so it is sort of similar to still like an auction, it wasn't a price that was put out there, and, okay. And then, did any of these have liens on them from the city, like other than tax liens such as demolition liens?
Don't we have any of them? Yes, no demo liens.
Okay, well, I understand, sometimes we own them, but sometimes there's still a lien, I don't know how that works. I know a lot of our debt, like the city's debt, is from old demolition that we will never get back, unfortunately.
I know it all quite well because I put the liens on the property.
That's right, right. So, so, I mean, that's something that unfortunately people will hear, we have this huge debt number, and it can be buildings that have been torn down for decades ago, and it's not like we can just wipe it off, like a bank can wipe it off, so, so I was just curious if any of these particularly had any demo liens.
No, I believe they don't, not in my time.
All right, thank you.
My prior time, I should say.
And for clarification, they would have cleared land court and all that would have been-
Correct.
-eradicated or it would have gone away during land court.
Correct, and I understand that, I just, down the road, if we, like someone, a resident remembers, oh, you know, a house was torn down in that particular property, and again, I don't think people understand that, you know, that anytime we raise a home, that that goes on the city's debt, and it pretty much sits there forever, so.
It does until we sell them or write it off.
Yeah. But it's very hard selling a small lot of land-
Absolutely.
...for the cost of what it cost to demo a building, so, thank you.
Not so much the cost of the demo, but the cost of asbestos removal.
It's all expensive today.
It's all expensive.
Counsel Wilkinson.
Through the chair, too, through the mayor, to the assessor, I guess. This was all done like an auction, everybody had to bid on it, or I noticed the number, 10 cents a square foot comes up numerous times, I was wondering, who, did you set the 10 cents a square foot, or was that done by bid?
So, that was actually done the last time we did this abutter sale in 2018. For this particular sale, we did say 10 cents a square foot or equal to the assessed value, whatever was cheaper. It pretty much came out to be 10 cents a square foot is cheaper, so that was what was in the packet that was sent to all the abutters.
That would be the minimum.
Yes.
Right.
Can everybody hear me okay also?
Did you, did you set that 10 cents a square foot?
Did I set it? No, that's what we did the last time, so I just, by what we did the last time.
I was just curious as who calculated that number?
Who calculated the-
10 cents a square foot.
That was what was in the abutters packet from when we did the sale the last time in 2018, so that's what we did again this time.
No offense, but it doesn't-
I didn't make up my own.
-answer my question, how does, how did 10 cents a square foot get calculated?
What are you, what are you asking, exactly?
Like, how did we get to 10 cents? So, I think what Jessica's trying to say is that we, she inherited that packet, and that's what we went with.
Okay. That answers the question.
But I want to add to that, Counselor, if I may, around the table, when we were looking at this, we did discuss that we should maybe gauge that threshold a little bit, and how can we do that according to the guidelines that are set through the abutter sale? So, every process that we do, we always look to improve it, and our goal was to get these properties back on the tax roll.
I'm 100% for it, I've, it's my business, I just like to know how people calculate per square foot, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jessica.
Counsel Shade.
Yes, through the chair, to the mayor. You had mentioned that there were some properties with multiple bids, but all of these properties are going for 10 cents per square foot, so was a bid less than that?
Yeah, there was one person who bid less than that, and one person who only had a corner that was an abutter but still got notified as an abutter, and it was deemed in the best interest to award to someone else.
Thank you.
Counsel Harpen.
Through the chair to the mayor. So, yeah, I think this is a great program. I do remember when it was done in 2018, and there were quite a few that we had approved at that time. I think it's a great way to enhance our neighborhood, so I appreciate you doing the work on this. One of my questions, and this is just for informational purposes, so if there's a, if there's a lot of land, and it seemed like it's really not even a lot, it might be, you know, it's not really a buildable lot, it's some land that might be next door to your home, right, that, like you said, you might be using already. So, it's not like a, it's not like a huge investment type of thing, it's just some property that might be near your property that you're going to take ownership of. When you say abutter, so everybody, everybody was notified that this property was for sale, or they had the opportunity to buy it if they were in a butter.
A direct abutter.
So, that means that they somehow were connected to that piece of land-
Correct.
-either north, south, west, or east, or whatever, and so then they got a notification and they were able to purchase it.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so it had to, it's really all about the neighborhood.
Correct.
Right, okay, thank you.
And then there is another process that we're going to be undertaking with some of the lots that weren't successful in the abutter sale. For example, in the area that I live in, there are some vacant lots, and there are some homes that don't have any parking at all. So, eventually, we will look at those lots to see if someone is interested in buying them, maybe who has an apartment house on North Holden Street but doesn't have parking, maybe has an apartment house somewhere else that doesn't have parking that may be interested. But our goal is to get as much as we can back on the tax rolls. And reduce our maintenance.
Counsel Sapienza.
Yes, through the chair, to the mayor. The question I have is, say, one of the abutters buys a property next door, does that remain as a separate entity in the map and the zoning book?
No, once-
Or does it actually become part of their, their lot?
I believe the goal, Jessica, is going to merge them.
Okay.
Extend their property. Merge the map and lot.
So, it'll become one unit, and so the next time, say, they sell that property, they don't have to sell it as a separate piece of the map?
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, for our process, we want to clear the land as it is, and then at that point, the assessor's office will do what they need to do to merge the lots.
Okay. Thank you.
And, if I may, President Blackmer, one thing I say to the general public, if there is a house, a piece of land, or something that you're interested in, it's really important to have a conversation with the assessor's office and the treasurer's office. When I was a tax collector, if somebody came in and made an inquiry, I'd put a note in the file or asked them to write a letter that they were interested in the property, so when we go to sell them, we have a letter of interest. You know, as we move forward with the process and we fine tune it, it's just really important to understand that we are focused on rebuilding our neighborhoods, cleaning up our neighborhoods, and most importantly, even though it's small, but getting these, these properties back on the tax rolls. But it's going to take some time.
Okay, let's move on to the order. Just make sure it's the right one. 81, okay. Council Paper 12,179, An Order Accepting the Sale of Land on River Street Map 81 Lots 21 and 21A. A motion to adopt would be in order.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Counsel Sapienza, Counsel Wilkinson, and this is a roll call vote.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Alezkowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
And Blackmer?
Yes. Now, what I'll do with the next one, without objection, I'm going to file the mayor's communication for Council Paper 12,180, Mayor's Communication Number 101, Submitting an Order to Accept the Sale of Land on Front Street Map 107 Lot 37, and you have the details on that? So, I'm going to file the communication and move on to the order. Council Paper 12,180, An Order Accepting the Sale of Land on Front Street Map 107 Lot 37. A motion to adopt would be in order.
No, adopt? Second.
Counselors, well, Alezkowitz, Counselor Sapienza, any discussion on this one? Okay, it's a roll call vote.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Alezkowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Motion carries. Council Paper 12,181, Mayor's Communication Number 102, Submitting an Order to Accept the Sale of Land on River Street Map 81 Lot 60. Without objection, I'll file the communication and move on to the order. Council Paper 12,181, An Order Accepting the Sale of Land on River Street Map 81 Lots 60. A motion to adopt the order would be in order.
So moved? Second.
Counsel Wilkinson, Counsel Alezkowitz. This is a roll call vote.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Alezkowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
And Blackmer?
Yes. Motion carries. Council Paper 12,182, Mayor's Communication 103, Submitting an Order to Accept the Sale of Land on Bracewell Avenue Map 80 Lot 68. Without objection, I'll file the communication. And the order, number, Council Paper 12,182, An Order Accepting the Sale of Land on Bracewell Ave, Map 80 Lot 68. A motion to adopt the order would be in order.
Motion to adopt? Second.
Counsel Alezkowitz, Counselor Sapienza, Obasahan, I couldn't put-
Oh, it was Counselor Obasahan.
Okay, I couldn't put here who was first. This is a roll call vote.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Alezkowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Motion carries. Council Paper 12,183, Mayor's Communication 104, Submitting an Order to Accept the Sale of Land on Harris Street Map 81 Lot 163. Without objection, I'll file the communication. Council Paper 12,183, An Order Accepting the Sale of Land on Harris Street Map 81 Lot 163. A motion to adopt would be in order.
So moved?
Counselor Sapienza, Counselor Alezkowitz.
Oh, it was Counselor Shade.
I'm sorry. I was looking right at you, I'm so sorry. This is a roll call vote.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Alezkowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
And Blackmer?
Yes. Council Paper 12,184, Mayor's Communication 105, Submitting an Order to Accept the Sale of Land on Harris Street Map 81 Lot 164. Without objection, I'll file the communication. Council Paper 12,184, An Order Accepting the Sale of Land on Harris Street Map 81 Lot 164. Motion to adopt would be in order.
So moved? Second.
Counsel Obasahan, Counsel Shade, roll call vote.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Alezkowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Motion carries. Council Paper 12,185, Mayor's Communication 106, Submitting an Order to Borrow $500,000 for the city's share of feasibility study regarding Housick River flood control. Without objection, I'll file the communication, mayor.
So, this request is the city's share of a project that has been long overdue. We are not bearing the cost of this ourselves, this is a pledge that the City of North Adams is behind this project. We are in the process and working with the federal government to secure funds of $1.5 million. The Berkshire delegation has worked on earmarking state bond authorization for $1 million, and the $500,000 is our share of a $3 million feasibility study. The majority of it is a federal project, which has been in process for many, many years. Since I've been in office, I have worked diligently with the Housick River Revitalization people to get the attention of the feds. I come to you tonight with an introduction of this authorization, and I will be bringing in some of the folks from the Housick River Revitalization at the next meeting to talk about the project overall. But this is far from a, an ask that is going to blindside anyone. I think everyone has been aware of our aging issues with the flood control shoots. This is a feasibility study, and this is our, our portion of the package, so to say. We, of course, will secure the funds from the feds, secure the funds for the state, but for us to ask for buy-in from those, we need to have buy-in at a local level. And as far as it being clean or dirty, I will just say that this is the opportunity that we've had to present to the council. Everything is about timing. We have seen a lot of traction on the federal level with this, thanks to Senator Warren, Congressman Neal, Senator Markey. We thank Senator Heinz for his work at the state level, Rep. Barrett, Paul Mark, everyone has done their piece, and now it's the city's time to do our piece. That doesn't mean that tomorrow we're going out and borrowing this money, we are going to wait until everything comes into line, but we need to show the Corps of Engineers that we are prepared to undertake this feasibility study.[1731.12]
In that feasibility study, do any of the walls that are falling down get fixed, or are we just looking at?
We are just looking at them, examining them, you know, looking at the magnitude of the feasibility study. You know, the focus of this project is infrastructure, but there is some economic development tied behind it, which is important to remember. So right now, it's just, what do we do? How do we fix them?
But this is for fixing them, not ripping them down and putting in?
No. There are areas that may warrant that, but we are not abandoning our flood control system.
No, no, I understand. Thank you.
Counselor Bona?
Through the chair. This is very similar to when we do feasibility studies for new schools.
Exactly.
So when we do a feasibility study for a new school, it's not saying this is what we're going to be doing. It is to study what we might do, study the options, look at the options. So obviously, this is going to come back and say, we may be repairing some sections, we may be replacing some sections. Obviously, Housick River Revival already has some great plans that have been developed that probably are getting incorporated. My guess is this, part of this feasibility study is going to go through some engineers, some architects, and they're going to have some, probably what will save some money is some plans that have already been developed through Housick River. The question that I have is, because it's not like something saying this is going to happen, step A, step B, is, is it realistic to say that down the road, that all of a sudden, you know, we're handed a chunk of money for the Housick River, that some of that includes reimbursement of this?
Anything is possible at this point, but for us to get through the federal piece and get that money released, and portions of that money released, we needed to come up with an additional one point five million. As I said, the Berkshire delegation did a great job in stepping up, and this is the city's portion.
Okay. If I can continue, this is like I say, I know a lot of times with the school ones, we get like eighty percent of it back.
As of right now, Counselor, I don't know of any reimbursable programs.
Okay.
But as things develop, you know, projects get floated.
Right. But what we do know is, if we don't do the feasibility study, it doesn't move forward. It's basically a requirement that's going to be coming down either from state or federal saying, you want more money, where's your feasibility study? So it's sort of, we have to do it.
Exactly. The Housick River Revitalization Group have been diligent in knocking on the door of the Corps of Engineers and getting their attention. And this group has been committed to this project for a very long time, and we finally got some traction. We've got a senator at the federal level who's listening to us, and now is our time to move. If we don't earmark the five hundred thousand dollars, then our application's not going forward.
And one more. Is this five hundred thousand, or obviously the total amount of whatever the feasibility may be, is that something that's been an estimate of what, so we may not spend all this?
Correct.
Okay.
The Corps of Engineers had estimated what they know about our project, that it's a three million dollar project, and I can get one point five out of the feds. And this is what I have to do to get the rest of the money.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Shade?
Yes, through the chair to the mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
First, obviously, it's really important that we repair our flood shoots. They've been damaged for a long time, and obviously, a feasibility study is necessary for that. Of the, of the other money that's, that's being proposed here, has the rest of the communities already committed to their share?
This is just the North Adams section.
Okay.
Just the North Adams section.
This is just for the North Adams section, okay. My second question is, when would we expect to need the loan to be taken out for?
Yeah, it all depends as how things progress with the releasing of the rest of the money and the approval of the project.
Okay.
So we have the ability to spend the money without borrowing it right away in form of a ban, but, you know, we usually spend our money last.
Okay. And then lastly, with this type of loan, how we're doing it, would it make sense to do part of it from our current funds, or perhaps release?
Probably not right now.
But when the time comes?
That, that is something, at the time when we go to borrow, we may say, okay, we use five hundred thousand dollars for this project, but I have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars somewhere else that could be used. The, the five hundred thousand is considered local fund, and right now, at this point in time, the, the bond authorization is the best way for us to go.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Alaskowitz?
Through the chair to the mayor, what is the scope of the area of this feasibility study? Is it just the shoots themselves, or is it other parts of the river that are part of the flood control?
It's, it's the flow of the whole flood control, and we'll get into more details of what that looks like next week when the Housick River Revitalization people are here for a brief presentation.
Counselor Harpen?
Through the chair to the mayor. Just a couple of questions, and both of them are basically on the timeframe. So really, just the first question is, what do you think the timeframe is for all the funding to be released? And the second question is, what do you think the timeframe is, years, months, whatever, for the complete feasibility study?
Well, that could be, it all depends on what happens with the Corps of Engineers. Right now, we know that the federal, the feds are ready to release, I think it's three hundred thousand dollars right now to kickstart the project. So it's kind of a phased disbursement, but we're, we need the commitment of all three parties before we can develop a timeline. But it could be anywhere from probably two years to five years, depending on when things get released and when we're able to procure an engineer.
Okay, so the, up to five years for the feasibility study to be completed?
It could be depending on the magnitude of, of the project.
Okay.
I would, I would hope that within the next few months, we will know what's getting released when. But this doesn't mean tomorrow we're going out and borrowing the money. It just means that this authorization is going to sit there until we need it. But we need a commitment of local funds to get us started.
And our debt level right now is fine. We're nowhere near our capacity. And the other issue is, I think one of the issues is three hundred million, three million dollar study, we're putting up one-sixth of that, so what's that, about eighteen percent? Less than twenty percent of that study is being paid for by the city, and I think that's a pretty good bargain. And I want to thank the delegation, both at the federal and state level, for securing the funds needed to get this done.
And the folks at the Housick River Revitalization.
And obviously, all the work that they've done, been doing forever, for years. So I think that's, those are all the things we need to kind of take into account. It's not like we're at our debt limit, so.
Correct.
This is, seems like a very worthwhile borrowing.
Thank you. And Counselor Bona?
Yeah, through the chair. You know, five years seems like a long time, obviously, you know.
Snatching construction.
You look at how long it's been there, but I guess one concern would be, is securing parts that are nearing possible collapse? And also, do you happen to know, as we've, how many, two, three sections have come down, you know, over the years?
I think it's more than two or three.
Has it been? And each time, those run like a hundred, two hundred thousand to fix approximately? Does that sound about right?
The low end.
On the low end. So this is the cost of two pieces, if you look at it. But the, are there sections that are as urgent that actually can affect, in a sense, how fast some of this moves?
I would say yes. As far as safety issues, the Corps, you know, will come out and do some inspections, but the reality is they're looking at a total project.
Right.
The Corps doesn't want to chunk this off, and neither do we, because if we fix one section, we have more pressure on another section. And I think it's important, and the Housick River Revitalization people know it inside and out, but when the flood control chute was constructed, some of the walls were to have more beams as supporting beams, and they should have had different sections in them, different supports, and it seems like somebody at the time cut some corners, and there's only two beams holding up, and there should be four.
Hmm.
And there's a question about the cross beams. So the sections that we have failed, we know that it was a defect in the wall. And now the problem is the walls failed, so now the water is going behind and undermining whatever earth is behind the wall and pushing the rest of the sections out. A good place to look is on.
Will Odell.
Near my old office, Lisa. Where's that parking lot?
Will Odell.
Will Odell. That section is pretty bad, and you can see the water going right behind the wall. So that, that is, is a big concern.
Thank you.
Counselor Sapienza?
Yes, through the chair to the mayor, a couple of questions. Considering the interest rates on our bonds, are they satisfactory interest rates right now?
Yes, but remember, you cannot borrow money in advance.
Right, right, of course.
Right, so we couldn't borrow this money today and then wait three years to do a project.
Right. Okay, another question, too. Is there anything that our city people can do to help mitigate further damage?
No.
Okay, because I notice there's a lot of trees along certain areas of the flood control chute, and in some cases, I think that's why, partially why the flood control, that's my opinion, that the flood control chute did fail because of tree roots and things like that.
Yeah, there are areas that they have done some clearing, but the problem is mostly with the construction.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Shade?
Yes, through the chair to the mayor. If there were more damage to the wall while the feasibility study was going on, would that impacted anyone?
I can't answer that. I, I.
Would that?
It, it could maybe trigger some emergency funding or maybe some FEMA stuff, but I, I can't predict. This has been an issue, I mean, I think I started with the city in nineteen ninety-one, nineteen ninety-two, and I remember Judy Grinnell being here and hearing her speak for the first time about this. So this is a project that has evolved and started maybe with beautification, but has evolved into an infrastructure issue.
Okay.
And, and we need to fix the infrastructure, we need to beautify the area, and we need to drive economic development around these areas.
To clarify the question a little, if the study is going on and a piece of the wall falls off, will we have to wait to fix the wall until the study's done? Or will they allow us to continue to do repairs?
Most likely, we'd, most likely, we'd have to seek emergency repair money.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion, we have a second. We've had a lengthy conversation about this. Anything else? Anyone else? Okay, this.
Point of order?
Oh, I'm sorry, wait, this is actually the, this is the, yeah, I'm sorry. This is a communication. Let's move on to the actual order. The communication was filed. Council Paper 12,185, an order borrowing five hundred thousand dollars for the city's share of a feasibility study regarding the Housick River flood control. This would be an order, a motion to adopt the order?
So moved?
Second.
Counselor Wilkinson, Counselor Sapienza, and any more discussion? This is a roll call vote.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Alaskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
And Blackmer?
Yes. Thank you. Council Paper 12,186, Mayor's Communication 107, seeking confirmation of a list of election wardens and the inspectors for the term through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Motion to adopt or approve would be in order?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counselor Alaskowitz, Counselor Shade, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I have to go. Council Paper 12,187, a petition from National Grid to hold a public hearing for a poll location on South State Street. We'll set that public hearing for November ninth at seven thirty P.M., and you will take care of notifying the Butters and posting it. So, thank you, let's move on. Counselor Shade?
Yes, are we able to have two public hearings on the same night?
Yeah.
Making sure the procedure.
Um, open forum. Anyone wish to address the council on issues of municipal significance? Please approach the microphone, name and address for the record. Two minutes, no personal attacks, and it's not generally a conversation, it's your ability, your opportunity to bring something to our attention.
I would just like to apologize to the mayor. You've answered all the questions that I had in my mind, and it sounded very good. Thank you, bye.
Thank you, Mr. Cardamino. Anyone else wish to address the council? Mayor's updates? You don't get to sit down much tonight.
That's okay. I need my steps. I'm excited to announce that the library received a grant for what we call a roving archivist. This person is going to come into our library and work with us to preserve our special collections and improve access at our library. There isn't really a monetary amount assigned quite yet, but we're working on developing what that looks like, but we made it through the first round, and this is something that's really important to our library because we've kind of been stalled in preserving those special collections. So I'd like to thank Kim DeLago for her work on this grant. Also, I'm pleased to announce that the North Adams Police Department has been awarded a grant of thirty-two thousand dollars to restore our K-9 unit. Officer Michael Cogswell, who you all met a few months ago, has been appointed our K-9 officer and will start training in the spring. I'd like to thank Detective Zestra and Stacy Abucy for working on this grant and spearheading that initiative. The thought is that the K-9 unit will be a utility unit. It will be search and rescue, drugs, comfort, as well as another tool in our toolbox to work in our department. I want to retract a little bit. It's not going to be a comfort dog because it's going to be more drug and search and rescue. I wanted a comfort dog, but I lost. So I'm excited about that, very excited about that. Trick or treat in the downtown will be on Friday, October twenty-eighth, from four thirty to six. The city of North Adams will be hosting a table under the marquee at the Mohawk, so please stop and get a treat, or maybe even a trick. Mr. Cardamino, if you come, you're getting a trick. Neighborhood trick or treat will be on Monday, October thirty-first, from five thirty to seven P.M. And I just want to remind everyone, I can't believe I'm going to say this out loud, that the parking ban will start on November first. I know when I first came into office, the council had passed an ordinance about snow removal and all of that. We have door hang tags to remind people about clearing their sidewalks in areas that have been problems before, but winter is just around the corner for us, so.
Stop with that negativity. I'm sorry. The truth. Committee reports in minutes. Liaison updates and counselors concerned. Counselor Sapienza?
Yes, I had the opportunity to attend a North Adams Chamber of Commerce meeting about a week ago, and they have some interesting programs. If anybody isn't familiar with the North Adams Chamber, I'm going to read their statement. It says, "The mission of the North Adams Chamber is to explore, define, and share, promote the unique story of northern Berkshire County by connecting individuals, facilitating conversations, and leading the development response of responsible growth practices." And it goes on to say, "The North Adams Chamber is an independent, nonprofit, economic development organization in the city of North Adams that aids in the growth and the vitality of businesses in northern Berkshire County." In November, they will have a, some, what they call a tech makeover workshop. There's going to be three workshops, open to businesses or individuals that wish to attend. Each class costs fifteen dollars, or at a rate of thirty dollars for all three. The three sessions are going to be November seventh, November fourteenth, and November twenty-first. And it's going to be get organized, get found, and get social, all based on digital marketing strategies. And it says, "The workshop is a series of, the workshop series is a result of two years of recognizing the technology needs of local businesses through the Chamber's Business Assistance Program." And it, I guess it was also in twenty nineteen, the organization received grant funding through the Franklin County Community Development Corporation to launch this one-on-one consulting program, and has since helped businesses, the business community grow and maintain jobs, get access to legal and financial help, and grow their social media presence. And let's see, is there anything else? Says, "All businesses throughout northern Berkshire County interested in improving their digital marketing or learning how to make their businesses more efficient using the latest tech tools are encouraged to attend one or all of the workshops in our tech makeover series." in our tech makeover series this November. You can learn more about the workshops and register at na-chamber.org." Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Shade.
Yes, an update from the Idea Commission. Uh, we have set a date for the second workshop training, and that will be on November 14th. Um, we do ask that everybody respond to the email to let us know if you can attend, and that is for, uh, elected officials in North Adams, so, the council and the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Harpen.
Just a quick update, um, there was a meeting of the Traffic Commission on October 12th. Um, one of the issues that we discussed, we received a, a letter from, uh, a neighbor up on Walnut Street regarding parking up there. Um, when you get to the top of the hill, I'm sure everybody is familiar with the hill, you can't miss it, um, and when you get to the top of the hill and take a left as you're going south, um, there's been some parking on both sides of the street, and it's caused some traffic issues. Um, so, uh, we did confirm to move the parking, um, south. I don't know how many feet, we haven't determined how many feet yet, but, um, back to the first driveway. I'm not sure how many feet that is, uh, probably 15 or so, but, uh, we are fixing the, uh, the parking issue up there at the top of Walnut Street.
Counselor Sapienza.
Yeah, this is a counselor concern, uh, being that we're almost into the heating season and the price of oil and fuels are going to be really high this winter. I just want to, uh, make everybody aware that, uh, some, some people may be seeking alternate fuels to heat their homes. Be careful. Make sure you have a properly installed heating system. Make sure that you have CO detectors in every living floor of your home. Uh, CO is, carbon monoxide is a silent deadly killer, and, uh, each year, many people die because of, uh, carbon monoxide poisoning. And unfortunately, sometimes it happens at night when people don't realize it's occurring, so, uh, just want to bring that out there, make everybody aware of that. And hopefully, everybody stays safe and is able to keep their homes nice and warm this winter. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bona.
Yes. Um, this is a request, uh, for the mayor, hopefully, coming up in the near future, we can, um, get an update on the Public Safety Building, where we might be going with that, you know, if the state's releasing any planning funds or anything, but, not tonight, but hopefully, in the near future, we hear something, because I'm sure it's on a lot of minds. Thank.
Okay. Um, reminder, polls, uh, on early voting, I'm just, what do we call it? Early voting is started, so if you need to, please do that. Um, you can still do absentee ballots, call the clerk's office or mail a letter. And the polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM on November 8th. So please, voting's important, and there's, don't forget the questions, there's questions on the ballot.
Actually, yeah, to continue off of that, I want to compliment, I was in the city clerk's office last week, and, um, may, the city clerk probably can answer, but how many ballots have already, did you have to send out?
Uh, about 1,500, I think.
So far, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I think a lot of people are worried about getting out, either being sick or the weather. Um, I also want to, the last meeting, we were, unfortunately, didn't introduce Tina Lea and Azio, our Assistant City Clerk. Um, she's promised to stay forever. She's never going to leave us. Um, so I'm clearly glad to have her on board and give Josh some help, and, um, although I appreciate all the help we've had, it'll be nice to have some permanent staff going forward and, and in the new year to have that to look forward to. Um, I also want to thank the counselors who brought in updates on what they were doing on their committees and their, um, liaisons, so I appreciate that. Anything else? A motion to adjourn would be in order.
Motion to adjourn. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.